The City of Ellsworth Planning Board meeting for May 7, 2025. Introductions, please.
Mark Ritz, board member.
Vince Messer, board member.
John DeLeo, chair.
Rick Lyles, vice chair.
Mike Hane, board member.
Staff introductions.
Assistant City Planner, Burton Mara.
Robert Grant, code enforcement officer.
Thomas Cameron, fire inspector.
Okay. We don't have the minutes from the April 2nd meeting, so we'll bypass that. Item number three, final plan review of a major use site development plan entitled Dice Arts Convenience Store for applicant and owner Dice Art Realty Operations LLC. The proposal is to construct a convenience store, car wash, and retail space. The subject property is approximately 2.80 acres located at 269 and 271 High Street. Tax map 128 lots 2 and 3 located in the commercial zoning district. Someone here representing Dice Arts.
Scott Braley with Plymouth Engineering, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. For Zoya.
Thank you very much. First of all, just want to thank staff again for all their help with this project. It's been very valuable as we put together the package. We are here for final review tonight. If you take a look at the cover letter on the top of your booklets, you will see a list of what we understood to be the questions or concerns from the preliminary review. And so we have addressed each of those. And I will just quickly go through those after a general summary of the project and then be willing to take any questions. We have revised the plans based on the input from the planning board and staff and others since the preliminary meeting. Again, we're doing a new retail facility with eight fueling positions for gasoline and vehicular traffic, as well as two fueling positions in the back for diesel trucks. Once that is all up and going, we'll be tearing down existing car wash and building a new tunnel car wash. And then following that, we'll be building the two-unit retail building on the, on what is the, basically the north side of the project. From the previous reviews and input from staff and yourselves, there was a question from staff regarding the pylon sign we were putting up. The one that we had in our original package was larger than allowed by the City of Ellsworth's specifications. The one that is in appendix F now, the staff has reviewed and does meet the specs, as well as it has been relocated due to the main DOT's obstruction laws. The island between the two driveways is not wide enough to be 20 feet from the curb line. So we've moved it just north of the entrance and behind the sidewalk and out so it is 20 feet from the curb line. So that was that. There is some revised data from the traffic engineer, a couple of different parts. One regarding updated crash data from, including the 2024 data that became available. And also the addition of some information for Short Street. The conclusion from that and also from the letter from the abutter regarding the proximity of the entrance to the entrance exit for Dairy Queen. The DOT and the traffic engineer determined that there was, that was not going to be an issue, that it was less of an issue than the distance between the two existing entrances and exits of Dairy Queen. The third thing that was on our list was there was some letters we had produced for the fire department, water, and sewer that were in our package, but they at that point had not been signed by those agencies. They now have been and are provided in appendix E. We received some comments from the Arbor Commission with some recommendations about the number of trees on the street, as well as the species of trees. Our plans have been updated to match the Arbor Commission's recommendation. So you'll see those trees on sheet C1. And when you go to the landscape detail sheet, the actually call out for the species is, is on that, as well as some clarification they asked for regarding some of the notes, mulching notes, things like that. So that has all been incorporated into the plan after we received those comments from the Arbor Commission. Additionally, we have a revised siding plan. There was some spillover on the abutter. That has been removed. There is still a very limited spillover at the exit to High Street. But as I noted then, for that exit, the DOT and their permit is looking to have, I think it's .6 to 1 foot candles at that exit. And, and we're in the vicinity of .2, .3. So that together with the street lights across, I think will be, will be adequate for that. And so we do have that little bit of spillover, which is contrary to your ordinance. But based on, and I think we'll hear from staff on that issue as, as we get going tonight. There was a manhole proposed to connect to the existing sewer on High Street. After working with the sewer department, what we ended up doing is they're, they're decided they just soon have a sanitary Y at the main itself. So we moved the manhole back in onto the site about 20 feet. So it's not, so it wasn't in the entrance or in High Street. So that's been adjusted as well. The internal sidewalk that we have that runs up the north side of the site, we have adjusted based on DOT's request to put an esplanade. We did not want to put curbing there for snow plowing purposes. And so the DOT asked us to put an esplanade between the sidewalk and the main traffic flow within the site. So we have done that. That also brings up the subject of, of snow removal that you folks had questioned last time. And it's in our response later, but since I'm on it. The, the Dice Arts have their own vehicles and they're, and do a lot of their own work on sites. They typically are a little careful about lawn maintenance. And so their plows are directed only to plow until the front wheels of the plow truck are about to leave the pavement. So then if there's an accumulation of snow, they bring in the loader and trucks and take it off. So the, the concern, I think, was the continued pushing of snow if we had a bad winter. And it ended up, ending up down in the Dairy Queen driveway. And so that's how that will be prevented by the routine maintenance that Dice Arts will do. We also were asked about a gutter on the rear, rear, excuse me, rear of the retail building there. We have added that gutter and it will discharge in the same place as the foundation drain that is now shown on the utility plans that the chairman requested being shown, because we didn't show the actual foundation drain discharge. And we have added those to the plans as well. And with regard to the concern raised by the abutter about the grades at the interconnect, the way we have it graded right now, if nothing was to be done on the, on the abutters property, we're still a little bit less than 5% grade between the turn out of our parking lot and the interconnect at the property line. So 5% is 1 in 20. That actually meets a handicap ramp with no, with no rail grade. So we think that is certainly flat enough to dissuade any concerns. And with that, we have received, and I think you probably have copied in your packages, of the final DOT permit. Transportation permit is the, has been signed by Assistant State Traffic Engineer. And so that subject is taken care of. We are currently, I guess you could say posthumously, working through the developer agreement situation with the DOT. Because we, the, as you're well aware, we came in early, got the road opening permit, because it's in the contact, contract zone. You guys did it as a city. And we got the utilities done and the sidewalk and curbing done and got out of the way of, of the paving project. Well, because this project has a traffic movement permit, any work we're doing in their right of way requires us to have a developer agreement with the DOT. That is currently pending. We're working through that with them right now. There's no issues. The, the woman who's dealing with it from DOT actually offered to make out the application for us if we needed her to, just to get it taken care of. But that is one thing, not that I am a big fan of conditions and permits, but that is one thing that probably, being that we don't have that, the, the staff would probably recommend and I would suggest that there be a condition on any approval that you gave tonight, that that developer agreement be finalized with the main DOT. And with that, I am done and ready for any questions or comments.
You have a couple?
I have a couple. Yeah, I, I looked at the, some of the additional stuff on traffic accidents and so forth. Could have been a little easier to find, but you know, I'm glad to see that it was basically there. And you know, the comments and the concerns that I had for the most part, were satisfied by the additional data and the various, you know, back and forth the emails and whatever. So, so I'm, I'm basically don't have anything to say about that, I guess. You know, I, I still have concerns about the interaction with Short Street. At the same time, there's, I think that they have addressed that to the extent that they possibly can. And in a very real sense, Short Street actually isn't your problem. It's, you know, the state's problem or the city's problem or whatever. So, you know, that's a bad situation. I don't think you've made it any worse. Cutting down the number of curb cuts and so forth along High Streets is a good thing. I see you took care of the potential site distance problem out of the one exit. Yeah, exit, in terms of the positioning of the tree and so forth. So I'm basically good, I think. But I do reserve the right to chime in whenever I want to.
To be instructed.
There you go.
Any other questions?
On the, the commercial building off to, on the north side of the lot, on each side you have a five-foot walkway and then the five-foot grass esplanade. Did you say where all those parking places are is, I see the bollards, but is there a curb there?
There is not a curb there. There's not a curb there. Believe it or not, in all the stores we've done for Dice Arts in recent years, the only one that they put curbing on, three months later, a lady drove through the middle, into the middle of the store. So they have gone in all cases to, to flat walkways and bollards at the, at the parking spaces to keep people from running into the building, quite frankly. And what we've done, and it may be a little hard to follow, but what happens is the sidewalk comes up with the esplanade. Then as we get to the building, the esplanade ends. We have just the walkway behind the bollards. Then as we get to the west of the building, the esplanade comes back in play and the walkway is five feet off the pavement again.
So somebody comes in from High Street on, on the sidewalk. They have, that's going to be asphalt or concrete or some type of sidewalk. And let's say they walk in from High Street to that commercial building. They walk a certain distance on the sidewalk and then walk on grass?
No, actually, if you, it, it's probably a little hard to see on the plan. If you allow me, I'll point out on the plan. You'll see that the edge of the pavement right here is cur, is, is angled out. So that we end the esplanade and the walkway goes at a 45 over to the walkway in front of the building.
Okay, so the grass esplanades are on either end of the?
Of the building will angle out to the sidewalk.
And an esplanade is just a kind of a grassy strip?
It's just a grass strip. It's a five-foot grass strip.
So just wanted to use that fancy name there.
Yes.
Got it. You see where?
Yeah.
And that word came from DOT. That's what they made me use.
Of course it did. Why am I not surprised?
Probably came from Spain, but anyway.
We're going to rename that anyway, probably.
I'll have some, I forget. At the public meeting, Andrew, are you coming up?
Hi.
I would like you to.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Because I, you know, I want to go over your letter.
Yeah.
I mean, the applicant, I think has addressed it, but I'd like to hear directly from you. Because some of what you wrote, I don't totally understand. So I want to get a, just to make sure I, I totally understand it. Does anybody else have any questions? I'm holding it to the public here. And I'm inviting you up, Andrew.
As he's going there, can I have one question real quick? Coming out of Short Street onto High Street, is there a no right turn sign there?
There should be.
No, I did that. Do we know if there is? I was going to venture over there to see, but.
There's a right turn only sign.
Yeah.
But that's it.
No, left, you're coming out on Short Street onto High, what you're talking about?
Oh, on Short Street, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there is.
I think there is too, but I'm not positive.
I think there is.
And if, and that wouldn't be the developer's responsibility to put that in there anyway.
Not the city.
Note, note, note the city, though, that if that sign is not there, it should be there. If it's in bad shape, it should be updated and so forth and so on, with or without this development, actually. But.
Okay, so could you just go over your, your engineering letter?
Andrew McCullough, on behalf of the Main Coast Mall property. And again, I think the, with the DOT traffic movement permit being issued and the comments that have been received, I believe this has been addressed. My concern with, was regarding traffic was with the right turns out of that exit-only road that is on the south side of Dairy Queen. That there was, would be the potential for conflicts with vehicles entering Dice Arts. Because they're going to be slowing down to enter just beyond that exit.
Yeah. I mean, I, I understand your point, but I, I guess I would say too, that a similar situation exists on right turns coming out of McDonald's.
Correct.
Then kind of interfering, not interfering, but then you have the entrance into Dairy Queen. Kind of the same situation.
Correct. And, and, and when we did that project, we had to maintain a minimum of 75-foot separation there.
What's a separation now?
I, I don't know what, I haven't seen the final plan, frankly.
Scott, do you know what that separation is?
I'm about to.
Okay.
An actual ruler.
Every engineer comes equipped with a ruler.
I have, I have, I have rulers.
I'm sure you do.
And this also came from DOT. One of their engineers gave it to us. It has the 25 scale on it. It has the 25 scale on it, which you can't get everywhere.
The state's got a budget prospect.
All right, let me see, 30 right there. From center of driveway to center of driveway is 80 feet. I mean, at the closest point, at the closest point, it is 60 feet.
So that's, that's comfortable. Yes, it's roughly the same. Yeah. So, and my other comment or concern, which was addressed by the gutter, is I was concerned about concentrated sheet flow off the roof coming down and then coming on to directly, basically, I mean, because it's only 20 feet from that exit road, coming right onto that exit road. And especially in the wintertime, it being a problem. But with having a gutter there to intercept that and take that, and I'm assuming that takes it west with, to then your outlet.
It takes it west to the, to what would be the west end of the retail building, which is where the foundation drain from that building and the convenience store both will discharge. And then from there, it goes into the ditch to the culvert that crosses.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so those were, those were my two concerns. If, and if there was additional surface water coming directly off that side and then coming down into the soil filter for Dairy Queen, if that soil filter wasn't sized to treat it or handle it potentially. So I did, I did have that note in there about soil filter is not sized for additional off-site runoff. But with that water not going in that direction, that's not an issue.
Now, the interconnection on the back of Dice Arts lot that goes into the back of Dairy Queen lot, talked about a 5% grade. I mean, is that an issue? I mean, this is for an interconnect that basically could, does lead out to the Main Coast Mall parking lot?
I, I believe, I mean, it would be if the Main Coast Mall constructed a road in the future.
But right now, this interconnect just goes to Dairy Queen?
Goes, it just goes to the property line.
Just goes to the property line.
Right.
Similar to, it's similar to what was done up at Dunkin' Donuts up on the hill. They, they were required to put in an interconnect. And basically, they put in a narrow interconnect to the property, to the property line of Hilltop's property, what was Hilltop's property. Probably in a few months or so, we'll be talking about that again, or some more. But for right now, it is, it's not the first time I have seen that 5% is a reasonable grade to try to tie into if the Main Coast Mall has future development and is, as a result of a traffic movement permit, or they're required to put in a connection.
Well, is that interconnect set up in such a way that if Dairy Queen didn't want traffic, can traffic go from, when it's connected, when it's built? Can traffic go from Dairy Queen into the Dice Arts property and vice versa?
That, that's the intent. Actually, it was Dairy Queen's traffic movement permit that required that if they did work back there, they had to do this. And so, and so when we were doing our permitting, the, the DOT engineer found that in the Dairy Queen traffic movement permit. And so they made us do ours to the property line. Because that dumps out back just below the inlet of the culvert and into that big parking lot that is behind, it's really behind the Dairy Queen proper site. It's the big parking lot. I understood at one point there was going to be a cinema or, that there were plans that never got built. But it's not a, it's not an actively used parking lot right now, I don't think, is it?
No, it is not.
No.
Well, I mean, technically, no. So correct me if I'm wrong, but, because I don't have our numbers in front of me, but the Dairy, that interconnection is be, technically beyond what is leased by Dairy Queen. Is that correct? Okay.
And I can only chime in and say it's where DOT told us to put it.
Okay, if it's, if it's beyond Dairy Queen. So, I mean, this, this is going to be pavement on your side.
Right.
Going into gravel portion of Main Coast Mall lot, bacon lot. Is it set up in such a way that it will prevent people from coming through? If Main Coast Mall didn't want traffic coming from Dice Arts into that empty lot, is this cross-connect going to be set up in such a way that that traffic is prevented? I mean, I understand the concept of interconnection.
Right.
If Main Coast Mall, and I don't know what happened with the pre, with Dairy Queen, if that had anything to do with, with Main Coast Mall. I mean, I'm just worried about, you know, traffic from Dice Arts going into Main Coast Mall lot if they don't want it.
Right.
All right. I, I mean, right now, I think there's a strip of, call it grass or where the plowing is done, but what have you. It's, it's, it would be a pretty rough trip. I mean, I'd take my pickup through there once Dice Arts was done, but it's not intended. And I mean, if, if there's a concern on the board or Main Coast Mall's part, then we certainly can put, you know, put a couple of Jersey barriers at the end of ours until such time that the connection is actually formalized.
I mean, I would suggest you have that conversation with Main Coast Mall.
The, the Dice Arts sell a ton of fuel to them. And they're, and my, my understanding is they're already planning to speak with Main Coast Mall about, about formalizing that interconnection.
Okay.
So, yes.
I just like to have good neighbors.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah.
Or even a couple of bollards or something that could be removable easily.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, with sockets so that they could be then?
I mean, it's easier than moving around a chunk of Jersey barrier or whatever.
Yes.
But that's for you guys to, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
For you guys to decide.
Yep.
Scott, Brittany gave you a copy of an email from Bernard Hope.
I, I read it quickly when, when I came through the door. I think I understand the issues and obviously this, I'll make sure this is in the hands of the site contractor. A lot of the work that may have temporarily been traffic issues were when they were in the road doing the, doing the waterman, because that's basically where they had to go over to that side to make that connection. At this point, the curb and sidewalk and utilities are done, so all the work will be on-site. Now, with regard to the questions of dust and construction debris, I'll talk with the contractor and with Dice Arts and deal with it, whether it be, you know, snow fence or something that can help prevent that, you know, on a routine basis during construction.
And how long is the construction period?
The store is supposed to, is supposed to occupy and be open by the end of the year. So to me, that says we'll have pavement down before the plants close in November sometime.
So there'll be rattle around on-site, constructing things throughout the summer?
Between June, yeah, between June and the end of paving season. And then finishing up after that.
Because I'm sure the Hope's property and Goodwill has, even now, has a fair amount of traffic cutting through for shortcuts. It happens all up and down High Street. Wherever somebody can find a shortcut, they take it, even if it's not on a public road.
Okay. Anybody else from the public want to address the board on this? And I will close the public hearing. Any other comments, questions from the board?
What was?
I knew you'd have another one.
No, 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 this is not a question, really. Well, it is. You have the word, you know, you talked about a condition earlier. What was the, what, what were the words of the condition? Because that needs to be in the.
This is the development?
That, that the main DOT developer agreement be secured. I think that's the only hole whatsoever in anything and.
And that's a formal name of that document?
That is, yes.
The M.Don developer?
Developer agreement, yes.
Is that the three or four-page doc, letter you were talking about that DOT?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I was making it out today and, and sent it off for, for signatures from Dice Arts today. So we should be getting that all into the DOT in the next day or so.
So we're looking for an approved version of the M.Don developer agreement?
Sure, yeah, that's exactly right. Yep. Because once we submit it with our signatures, the DOT region engineer will, will sign it. And then we'll send them the check. And then it'll get an official, or get a win number, what they call the win number.
I didn't need to know that.
Okay. But yes.
Okay.
Oh, before you do that, nobody checked with Tom. I mean, we got your letter, but everything's all set with you guys.
Yeah.
Scott, any, I mean, Rob, anything?
Okay.
Okay. So make the motion to accept the final plan of a major use site development plan entitled Dice Arts Convenience Store for applicant and owner. Dice Art Realty Operations LLC with the condition that a approved version of the M.Don developer, M.Don dash developer agreement be, be received. That's it.
Second. All available?
Thank you once again.
So does that mean we have my lawyers to sign after the meeting?
We do.
Okay.
I will leave now with Brittany. I will leave now with Brittany.
Okay, item number four, however, changes in the plant, the changes in the south wing. What we're going to do is, going to proceed with a final for the north wing and a preliminary for the south wing. And I think in one, one of your emails, you said you were okay with that.
Uh, yeah, our, our goal is to really get the north wing finalized.
Right.
South wing construction doesn't start for a while.
Uh, okay, so, I'm going to make a motion to change item four, I think you have item four and four A. So, item four is a motion, that's a motion to change item number four to final plan review of a major subdivision and major use site plan development titled 59 Franklin, Phase One, which is what we can, what we referred to it previously. And for applicant Cory Weigen and owner 59 Franklin LLC, the proposal is to construct six dwelling units on a lot with existing structure subdivision. The subject property is approximately 0.27 acre lot located at 59 Franklin Street, tax map 134, lot 33, in the downtown zoning district. Is there a second? Sure, yes. All in favor of changing item four? And then, we might as well, I'll go on to, I'm going to make a motion for item four A, to add an agenda item preliminary plan review of a major subdivision and major use site development entitled 59 Franklin Street, Phase Two, for applicant Cory Weigen and owner 59 Franklin LLC. The proposal is to construct two dwelling units, is that correct, Cory?
Yes.
On a lot with an existing structure subdivision. The subject property is approximately 0.27 acre lot located at 59 Franklin Street, tax map 134, lot 33, in the downtown zoning district. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Let's just talk further about the final for Phase One, the north wing.
Okay. So, to summarize, Phase One, North Wing was to convert what was a commercial restaurant into four dwelling units, and it's substantially similar, unchanged since previous presentations. So, I guess I can pass it to you guys if you have any specific questions on the north wing?
Yeah.
I mean, in the north wing, he's doing exactly what we previously approved.
Right.
Are there any questions for Cory or staff on that? What's the meaning? Any questions for Cory or staff on the north wing?
The only thing I have for you, Cory, just for the, to make, because of the official record, on the, in, in the application that you filled out, based upon the fire department letter from Chief on his item number three on numbering and street signage, the very last section on page four or five, would you make sure sometime, get with Brittany or whatever, and check, basically, the items, this building numbering, signage, and door numbering signage, okay? That needs to be part of the official record.
Okay.
And that would, that would coincide with the fire department's letter, so you could do that, okay?
As, from a fire department standpoint, has anything changed from the previous approval on Phase One, North Wing?
No, Phase One, North Wing, we are 100% in agreement that, as is.
Okay. And it's good to go.
Yes, sir.
So, I guess from the process you've gone through, just a reminder that, once you get this approval, you have to take it to registry.
Yeah.
So, do you have those for us to sign them all up?
Uh, this is the miler, correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, so, I'll make a motion, oh, public hearing. Anybody, any questions? Close the public hearing. So, I'll make a motion to.
I just want to say, what, what, what the, what the fire chief is going to look for is, is your action letter. So, what, once that's all done, he can, he can go over and get it registered. And they'll, they don't want the milers, but they, they do want a cup, paper, paper copy of the plan. So, that's just, I just wanted to make sure that was known, that they, they'll, they're, they won't accept it until their, our action letter or your action letter is done.
I wondered, if you looked through the past, approved, because before it came through as Phase One to Phase Two, I don't recall, but you could check to see if there was an action letter on Phase One, which probably nothing has changed. The only thing you probably going to have to change is the date, so, you probably won't have to draft a whole new one.
Uh, don't they want to see the signed?
Yes, they, they want to see a paper, a signed paper copy.
Right.
And the, and the action letter.
And the action, yeah, uh, from the previous subdivision we did, that's what they wanted to see, the grand view.
Okay.
No, but that's what that.
Would there be a difference between the action letter for a Phase One versus the whole thing? No? I don't. You have to, you'd have to go back, because we proved it in phases. Did we? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, you dig up the actual letter, well, they got the actual letter for Phase One, see what it says, if it's just a matter of changing the date or updating it, then just give me a call, and I'll come in and sign it.
Just some, just some paperwork before we.
Yeah.
Before we make it official, so, what, what, what he needs.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so, anything else from staff? Okay, so, then I'll make a motion to approve the final plan review of a major subdivision and major use site plan development title 59 Franklin for applicant, wait, wait, for fif, make a motion to approve the final plan review of a major subdivision and major use site plan entitled 59 Franklin, Phase One, for applicant Cory Weigen and owner 59 Franklin LLC. Second. All in favor? Okay. Now, we're on to four A, which is.
Four B.
Four B, okay.
Preliminary plan review of a major subdivision and major use site development entitled 59 Franklin, Phase Two, for applicant Cory Weigen and owner 59 Franklin LLC. The proposal is to construct two dwelling units on a lot with an existing structure subdivision. The subject property is approximately 0.27 acre lot located at 59 Franklin Street, tax map 134, lot 33, in the downtown zoning district. Cory is here to represent owner 59 Franklin.
So, this concerning the south wing, which through last month, came up that it may be lodging and rooming, and as we moved to the final for the project, Scott introduced the barrier-free permit. So, other than that, the floor plans and layout for the south wing have remained unchanged, but there was that new stipulation of a barrier-free construction permit.
Perhaps Chief, why don't you explain why we've gone from the previous plan that had technically had seven bedrooms?
Originally, my apologies, Scott, your local fire chief, so, the, the original plan that was submitted for Phase Two, South Wing, identified seven units, and by the state's definition, it was, it would be classified as rooming and lodging, because there were no individual kitchens for each unit. There was a shared kitchen, which took it away from being a dwelling unit, specifically as residential dwelling, and it moved it into the category of rooming and, rooming and lodging, similar to bed and breakfast. By that classification, everything that he had done, that Cory had done previously with firewalls and all that stuff met all the categories, except for, under the rooming and lodging designation, the state requires what they call a barrier-free construction or a construction, and, and a construction permit that has to be issued by the fire marshal's office. And so, based on that designation from the fire marshal's office, we relayed that back to Cory, so that he and his partners can make a decision on how they want to move forward. With that information, this is how we, we've moved into this new designation with the two individual apartment units, which changes its classification to residential dwelling, because now there is one kitchen and three bedrooms in one unit, and four bedrooms in another unit. So, now it's just a residential dwelling unit.
Pardon me? The same rules apply on the firewall between the two units?
Just the one hour.
Okay.
Because it's sprinkled building.
Which is the one inch? Do you remember that?
Five eighths inch type X drywall.
Yep.
Didn't you state in the last meeting that you were planning on one inch?
No, no. There was a confusion and discussion around the firewalls, but I think it's moved.
So, it's a five eighths of one hour wall?
Correct.
I guess I, I have one question, well, maybe two. So, the current plan, if I read the plans correctly, each of the bedrooms is going to have an exterior door, as well as an exterior door to the living room, or, is that, I mean, it look like each bedroom.
Has an exterior access and an interior access to the shared kitchen. And then to meet the egress apartments of that living space, we put in a door.
I mean, I'm just curious why you would have an entrance door into each bedroom?
Is it access?
I mean, normally, a, a three-bedroom apartment would have a main entrance into the apartment, and you go into the bedrooms.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't see why you can't have.
No, you can, I mean, I guess it pops into my mind that this is a way to get around the other.
So, as we were resubmitting this, Brittany kind of mentioned, any changes would complicate putting it back to preliminary, which we just submitted it as it was. So, there were no changes made here, because until tonight, we didn't know it was going to be split up and pushed back to preliminary again on the south wing.
I mean, is, is the long-term goal at some point to rent individual bedrooms?
From what Scott discussed, it sounds like that may still push it back into rooming and lodging.
Sorry, say again?
And maybe he can talk to that point, but my understanding is that may push it back into rooming and lodging.
That is correct. And that is something that code would be responsible for, making sure it didn't happen?
Basically, yeah.
So, the windows you have in each unit, are they egress-sized windows? Do you know that?
Well, it has a door, so that is the egress.
That's my point, is if you had egress-sized windows, you wouldn't need the door.
Uh, there is sufficient space to make those egress windows, yes.
Okay.
And previously talking with the fire chief, the way this is set up now, there, there were stairs on the back, on the west side of the building, which don't have to be there now.
So, if it, if it goes to residential dwelling, as it's presented to us right now, with two individual apartments, then the, the stairs on the back are no longer required, because it becomes a, basically a balcony area, a balcony, it's not required.
Because it's, because it's residential.
Because it's residential, correct.
So, I guess that'd be your choice as to whether you want to build those stairs or not?
Yeah, you can see, we noted on the plan, it's only one to three steps to grade at that particular area.
Oh, that was a lot, okay.
Yeah, because the backside of the building is partially grade and partially another walkout.
And the change also, will change Larry Gardner's addressing, so both of these apartments have a Franklin Street address.
They should, yes.
And it's one address per dwelling unit, which has four bedrooms? Well, three and, or three and four. Well, three. Yeah. Right?
Each, each, each apartment unit should have its own address identifier, not, not the bedrooms.
Right, okay.
It would end up being 59 Franklin, Unit D and Unit E, because we have A, B, and C already.
Correct.
On the, on the phase.
Yes.
And all this is sprinkled, correct, this whole section?
Correct.
So, I mean, these big ones we have, I mean, still indicate, this will have to be revised.
Yeah, it was submitted as it was, because with the discussion with, with Brittany, it was that it had to be submitted that way to basically continue moving forward in the current process.
Yeah, but those, I mean, that.
So, a lot of this information kind of came between TRT and the final submission.
When you come back for final, I mean, you'd have to eliminate the 50 Water Street, to, I'm, I'm adjusted RHB, and I don't, it has, still has addresses for Water Street.
Correct.
And the, and the, basically, the seven units.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So, 58 Water Street still applies, because there are units designated 58 Water Street. The very back one, you'll see 58 Water Street 2A in the top right corner.
It's part of the north, the first phase, it's part of Phase One, there's a Water, there's a Water Street access.
The building will still have two separate street addresses.
Yep.
Upon completion.
Yeah.
Not the south wing, though.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Say, not to, not to belabor the issue with you, Cory, but the fact that this is all sprinkled, one egress window in each bedroom would eliminate all the doors that you have, because it is sprinkled, because it's considered residential. I don't know if that would save you some money or not, but the fact that you had an egress window, you don't have to put doors in it, then you'd be good to go, because it is considered residential. So, might be something you may want to look at.
But he can solve the doors if he wants to, and that's.
Yeah, I mean, he can get rid of the, the main entrance door, but in each one of the bedrooms.
Right, no, I understand that, but, but that's totally on him.
That's totally on him, but I, it could be a savings for you, check on that.
So, any other questions? Do we have a public hearing? A little bit of public hearing, close the public hearing. You're so fast. Yeah, I think we actually did it twice. Okay, so I'll make a motion, and we approve the preliminary plan review of a major subdivision, major use site development title 59 Franklin Street, Phase Two, applicant Cory Weigen and owner 59 Franklin LLC. Second. All in favor? Brittany, go for it. Item number five. Proposed amendments to Chapter 56, Unified Development Ordinance, Article Two, Plan Approval and Permitting Procedure. Proposed amendment will remove Section 208-1. dash one, Building Permit Fees from Chapter Fifty-Six with the intention of creating its own chapter in the city ordinance. Mr. Grant?
Hi. Uh, so this all came about, oh, around December, January, I I started poking around and realized that the the building fees haven't been updated in a couple of decades. Uh, yeah, when Dwight Tilden was hired in two thousand and five, the building, the single-family residential building permit fee was seventeen cents. Um, that was when he was hired, that's what he never touched it. Uh, it was adopted into the UDO when it became a thing in twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen, and my intention is to finally update them after however many decades into a unified building fee ordinance with the plumbing fees, electric fees, everything else. Um, but the reason I want to take them out and make them their own own ordinance is because every time I want to go address a fee schedule change, I would have to come before you and ask if you think it's a good idea, when I think that's kind of a waste of our time, uh, to be honest. So if I just make it its own ordinance and then have fifty-six two oh eight one, I believe it is, refer to that new ordinance rather than have the fee schedule in in the ordinance itself, I think that would be sufficient, rather, you know, and it would just eliminate this whole process we're doing now every time I want to adjust a fee schedule a nickel or whatever. Or if I want to add something new or take something out.
So you say make your own chapter in the ordinance?
Yes, ma- have a unified building fee schedule. Have plumbing in there, have electric in there, everything that we do.
So where where plumbing and electric and whatever else?
They have their own chapters. I think there's plumbing is plumbing is twenty-six, and I can't remember what what electric is off the top of my head.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So anyway, so so there are those fee schedules.
Correct, and they're also out of date.
I'm sorry?
There the plumbing fee schedule one does not even reflect the current state minimums. It was it was adopted in ninety-eight and never updated.
So given those fee schedules that exist right now, or those fees, and if you change those, what's the process?
I just go to the I go to the city council and say I'd like to amend the chapter.
With the fee change. So the council, in fact, does have oversight then?
Correct.
On and that would continue to be the case?
Correct.
With these with these guys.
It was just all I all I'm doing here is asking permission to remove a responsibility from you that I think is overburdensome.
I don't want to be burdened.
Yeah.
But but-
Not overburdened, right?
Or even underburdened. Anyway, well, for underburdened, that gets me out of the pajamas, but in any event, so what you're saying is take this guy out of here, put it with these other guys, and whenever there are changes or whatever, they still have to be approved by council?
Correct.
Okay, well, I don't know. I mean, in all the years I've been on the planning board, we haven't had, I don't think there's been any discussion of fees and-
That's because no one wanted to burn you, John.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
But for for a little more context for this, the reason I wanted to do it to begin with is because I I discovered that the the Code Office is running at roughly forty thousand dollar deficit, uh, in large part because the fees haven't been touched in at least twenty years.
I I can attest to that. I've been, I was up there, I don't know how long, and they've been the same ever since I can remember.
And that's a long.
That's it's over twenty, yeah, twenty-five years or so.
The only question I had was ultimately, the council does approve these puppies?
The the, yes, the council will still be able to tell me yes or no on these updates.
And that's fine, I mean, with me.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? So take away, I got a little bit of public hearing. Any questions, sir?
No.
No, okay. Close of public hearing. So I'll make a mo- move, make a motion to present the amendments to Chapter Fifty-Six, Article Two, Section two oh eight point one to the city council.
Second. You're kind of taking over things here.
I wanted to speed it up a little.
Wait a minute. Doesn't that have to state that we're creating its own chapter in the city ordinance? In the motion?
I'm not, I honestly am not sure. You you could have to state that if you'd like, you can.
So where where are these going to go?
They're going to, it'll go into its own chapter.
Okay, move to present the amendments to Chapter Fifty-Six, Article Two, Section two oh eight one to the city council for inclusion in their own chapter. And do we need to have something that, I mean, if we approve this and it's not approved yet by council, I mean, it's not like there's a a fee-free zone in there.
No, all all you're all you're doing is recommending to the council that they do move forward with my proposal.
Okay.
There's no, nothing will be, nothing-
Falling in that crack.
Yeah, not, there 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 will be no Wild West, there's no no permits or fees or anything until that happens, yes.
Because you know, the developers will come out of the woodwork.
Absolutely. I I will have to process-
Hundred dollars, I mean, Jesus.
I have I have thousands of permits between now and then, if that's the case, I promise. But no, uh, there won't be any any lapse in fees until the new ones adopted.
Good. Is there a second on my amended portion?
I think I did that.
Okay. All in favor? I guess Brittany, if it does go to the council and approves it, then we just have to revise this chapter or something and specify and then always amend it on such and such date by the city council and it's moved elsewhere. I like this idea. It sounds a lot cleaner.
Yeah, I think it's a lot simpler to do it.
It's easier on him.
And everybody else.
I, yeah, as as part of, uh, as part of this whole new process, well, I want to have it stated that every five years or whatever, the Code Office is required to go through and and look at the at the fee schedule and see if it needs to be adjusted up or down or whatever. But it's, there's no requirement to do it now. Obviously, it hasn't been done.
Will there be any study done on where these fees should be?
Yes, I, um, for for one of the things I've done to to, um, look at it is, um, I took seventeen cents in two thousand and five and I did a, I did it just because that's what it was. The last time I I knew that what it was, I asked Dwight personally, he it was seventeen cents when he came here and it was never updated. So seventeen cents in two thousand and five money ends up being about twenty-eight cents in twenty-twenty-five money, uh, and I I want to make the, I want to make the single-family residential permit twenty-five cents. So I I want to make it roughly in line with inflation, but not quite. And that even at even at twenty-five cents, using that as my example, that's still half of what most towns are, you know, the the even smaller towns. So Bar Harbor's at forty-one cents a square foot for for your single-family residential building permit.
I'm so glad you said square foot. I was absolutely appalled that you were charged for seventeen cents.
No, no, seventy, sorry, I I, yes, seventy square foot.
Thank you.
Per square foot of the building.
Okay.
It's it's one of those things, I I, in my head, i- I, it's almost there without thinking. I know what I'm talking about, but I'm glad you asked for the clarification.
I guess I just wonder if twenty-five cents is too low.
It it may be. Uh, like I said, I I wanted to try to keep it right around inflation. So in a couple of years, um, I, when I relook at it, I I actually already have a plan to go to thirty cents, uh, because that would be roughly in line with what it will be. Hopefully hopefully inflation doesn't go out of control.
I mean, I would guess the council would ask for what the fees are in neighboring towns.
Oh, yeah. I I have I have all that data. I've I've I I actually took it to the finance committee several months ago now, when I had Bar Harbor, Brewer, Rockland, I had a bunch of towns that, you know, Orano, I had similar-sized municipalities.
The council has to approve your increases?
Correct.
Right, yeah.
So that's, they had to approve that I I make the ordinance to begin with and then all the changes as well, yes.
Anything else on that?
Unless you have any questions.
Nope. Anything else, Brittany, and the staff comments?
No, but I can move them.
Any, any updates on planner hiring?
Somebody's in the hot seat now.
Thank you, Chief.
I thought I was going to get out of here.
No, no.
Come up here. Hi, everyone. Sarah Devlin, Deputy City Manager. Um, we went through our first round of interviews, um, from our first kind of pool of candidates. Um, that we had some great interviews, but didn't really feel like we had hit a sweet spot for somebody who was going to be a good fit with the with where we're at with the city. So we reposted it under APA, the American Planning Association. We have received sixty applicants in like two days, so we're going through the process. We just had an interview this Monday that was really good, um, so that person will probably come on to another um, interview, second interview. Um, but yeah, we're going through the second round of applications right now.
Didn't you have about sixty the first time as well?
Yeah, and it's a mix, it's a wide variety of applications. You know, you have the people that are just kind of hit submit, submit, submit on all these different sites, and then you have people that do a formal letter and, you know, really put some effort into it. Um, so it's, but we, in order to score them and all that, you have to go through all of them. So we're kind of seeing the same thing. We have a lot of, I mean, it's graduation right now. A lot of people are buzzing to get, um, to get, uh, some job experience. We have a lot of educators that are trying to, I think, make a shift to a different career. A lot of federal employees that have applied, but yeah.
Employees who have recently lost their jobs?
I don't, no, I think just, you know, maybe are looking for a change as well. I mean, they don't say that on their application that they lost their job, so I don't know. But, um, so, yes, we're in, but I think we're still hopeful that between this new round and a couple that have been in the first round, we'll find, we'll have someone.
Just off the cuff, I'll talk to you later.
I'd love to talk to you. You're right up there.
So what was, what was the difference in the, not in the application process, but where you advertised? You used a different?
We, the first round, we used our traditional methods, I think, Main Municipal, Indeed, LinkedIn. Um, there might have been one other, but I believe they're traditionally the either free or least expensive. We used the American Planning Association this round, which did cost us a little bit of money, but it's a focus group. Um, so that's the difference.
And the target date for having discers on, or is it just whenever we can?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, kind of higher slow, just to make sure we get the right fit.
Okay.
Our Economic Development Director is going to be starting, uh, the first of June, so she'll be able to come on board and maybe take some pressure off the planning department, the planning department, um, as, you know, on some of the projects, but yeah, I mean, we don't want it to go on too long without some relief for Brittany.
I've got another month or two on me.
She's been a real trooper. I mean, she's done all of this with a big smile on her face, so I can't say enough about that and thank her for her great attitude with this transition.
I have a lot of great support, so we'll get there.
Uh, process on planning board members.
Uh, new planning board members, we spoke and selected our, I don't know if you can hear that up there, I have a little voice. Um, so we, do you want me to describe the whole process, or?
No, just where we're at now. I mean, we do have one applicant behind you.
The two applicants that are going to fill the alternate positions will be recommended to council at the next council meeting on May seventeenth. And once that's approved through them, then they'll be able to start serving on the planning board for next month.
Do we need to have any discussion or and or vote by this body?
Do you want to say you're getting done?
Nope, because it goes to council.
Do you want to say you're getting done? Okay.
So, um, do the June council meeting is where all the appointments are made, too, I believe, or is it May?
Yes.
Because all the, you know, there's typically the terms end in June, so we're right up at the end of the fiscal year where those new appointments are made.
I'm sorry. Just out of curiosity, because I really don't know, does this body have any input or persuasive comment on those people who might be selected?
Um, at this, not as a whole body, no.
No, or individual, like the chair?
We did a hiring or not a hiring, but like a appointment committee that did can have some planning board members on it.
Excellent, okay.
So there's some.
And Brittany is also in the process of setting up a formal process that, because over the past couple of years, I mean, the process has kind of changed from year to year, so we'll have a more formal, written, okay, this is how we select somebody.
Okay.
And it changed the next meeting, right? Yes.
Yes.
People know that?
Yeah.
It's the note. On the first Thursday instead of the first Wednesday.
I will send out the updated calendar to everyone, too.
And what's going on on the Tuesday? What was the purpose of the change?
Uh, Wednesday, so Wednesday is the annual HCPC planning meeting, which a few of us are attending.
Yes.
So it was a conflict of scheduling, and it was just easier to push ours, the planning board to the next day. So not a huge change, just, and I'll make sure to send out reminders everyone doesn't confuse the dates, and they all show up on the same, on the right day that month. So thank you all for being accommodating for that schedule change.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
There you go.
That's it.
Make a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good.
Oh.